Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, October 21st, 2013. Would you all please write in location to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in our regular session, we just ask for guidance and direction as we pursue and respond to the various issues before us. We are ever mindful that we live in an era of almost daily crisis in governments from throughout the world, and while ours may seem minor in some arenas, we are ever mindful that we are responsible and committed to the community of Batavia, and we want to do the very best we can to ensure the bright future and the success of our community in the days ahead. We just ask for this blessing under this understanding. We also tonight, as always, want to remember those from our community who are serving away from our borders under the defense and liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask for a special blessing to be showered upon each and every one of them, along with all those from throughout our country who are also serving so honorably on foreign soil. We ask tonight also to remember those from our community who are suffering in illness or through deaths of a recent relative, and we are ever mindful that we live in a world where challenges are constantly confronting us, and we are here to do what we can to overcome the adversities that some of them present, and also take advantage of the good things that many times a crisis will produce. So we ask for all these blessings, amen.
Alderman Brown, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chansett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
Alderman O'Brien is absent. Callahan?
Here.
Holman?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Facilien?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the City Council are present and accounted for, so we have the necessary form to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services. Do you have anything to say?
I have no changes, Your Honor.
Anybody else? Okay, moving to item number five then, which is the presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I propose to be accepted and placed on file, A, the tree commission minutes from June 5th, 2013; B, the building report for September 2013; C, approval release of public utilities' closed session minutes for March 8th, 2004; D, the J-Cow minutes for September 10th and September 17th, 2013; I propose to be approved, E, the October 11th, 2013 payroll amount of $714,917.30; F, the October 2013 accounts payable check register, the amount of $4,525,915.20; G, the City Council minutes for September 16th, 2013; H, Resolution 13-127-R, accepting deed to property located at 106 East Wilson Street; I, Ordinance 13-38, amending fee schedules and building and subdivision code Title IX and XI; J, Resolution 13-130-R, authorizing sale manipsually owned real estate at Wilson Street and Spiller Drive. I propose we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Move by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of the items on the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilien?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the consent agenda is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving then to item number six, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Is anybody in the audience? Mr. Olmstead? Gene, would you give us your name and address for the clerk, please?
Hi, thank you, Your Honor. My name's Gene Olmstead. My address is 221 West Wilson Street in Batavia. What I wanted to speak about was just something real quick. Since we have all these beautiful bump outs downtown now, I think there's an opportunity that we might have a one-time chance to use them in a positive manner, in a way that they never be able to be used in the future. And what that is, is Batavia used to be called Christmas Tree Lane, and what I would suggest to the council is, we have the opportunity to use all these bump outs on a one-time opportunity to put Christmas trees in there this Christmas. They could be all lit up. You'd have as many as twenty or twenty-five Christmas trees down Wilson Street, and there would even be the opportunity, if like Main Street wanted to get involved or whatever, to have schoolchildren from school classes decorate them if you wanted to, and they could have their own Christmas trees and stuff like that. And I just wanted to propose that to the council. Thank you.
Thanks.
Your Honor, I'd like to just thank Gene for coming up with that idea. I think it's a great idea. It, you know, many different things can be accomplished with it. We can, you know, involve the community with doing something special like that. Otherwise, we're going to be sitting here with some empty planters all winter long anyway, because we can't plant anything until next spring. And it's just a good, good, good cause for Batavia, and we've got a lot of volunteers that like to do a lot of things. I'm not sure who would organize it. That's something that needs to be batted around a little bit, I think, as far as who could take that on and organize it, because we've got to make sure that it works well with engineering and the contractors that are out there and everybody. But I think it's a great idea. I think it's something that we ought to all pursue.
I mean, I guess my only concern would be is acquiring the trees. I mean, as far as, I know when we used to buy the trees for the hanging on the poles, it was several thousand dollar expense to do it, so.
I think we'd be looking, I talked to Gene about this on Saturday. I ran into him, and I think there's like thirty-some areas that we could put the trees in, so we're looking at roughly thirty-some trees. So, again, maybe somebody could step forward and, you know, neighborhood groups or, or things like that, you know, where, you know, maybe a neighborhood wants to pitch in and do a tree, or the Girl Scouts want to pitch in and do a tree, or, just, just an idea that Gene, Gene came up with that I asked him to come downtown tonight and bring it up.
There's that scout troop that sells them right by Clark Island. Maybe they give us like a deal.
Well, we'll put the word out there, and let's see what we get from it, in search of Christmas tree sponsors.
Beautification of Batavia.
Absolutely. Okay, anybody else? All right, moving then to item number seven, which is the Main Street presentation. Kirk Hagaman?
Hey, good evening, everyone. As you know, most people know, September, this time of year is really one of the busiest times for Main Street, coming through the summer and into the fall here. So, a lot of successes to cover. In September, we had 250 Main Street volunteers that donated over 683 hours of planning meetings, programs, and events for the month there. A lot of things went on, the block party and the house walks, which contributed to a lot of those volunteer hours there. Two new businesses did open up in downtown, Batavia Nutrition at 144 West Wilson Street, and Chapter's Coffee House and Cafe, which took up the space at 10 South Batavia Avenue in the library there. Highlighted here, the house walk was another great success, which has grown amazingly over the last several years. Beautiful day, and one of the things that was great about that beautiful day is we had a lot of same-day ticket sales as well, which allowed us to raise right around $8,000 that can go right back into the downtown beautification and redevelopment down here. So, coming up, we have a, what was that?
Christmas tree.
Christmas tree, hey, there. I think we have another work plan we need to be working on here, Joy. So, coming up, we have a lot, don't forget that this weekend, we have Bat Fest, which is a free Halloween-themed family event, which will have music, food court, downtown trick-or-treating, a costume contest, a pumpkin roll down Houston Street, which should be quite entertaining, art activities, games. Albright Theater will be showing two free animated shorts at their theater on the third floor, right here at City Hall. Photo booth for everyone to use, and also something really interesting this year, Fallen Star will have a display of 3D pumpkins that after the use at, at Bat Fest will then be displayed in various local businesses around downtown. So that should be really interesting to see. Next opportunity to shop local, Thursday, November 7th, at 6:30 at Heritage Woods is the next Artisan Collective. And then also, we'd like to invite everyone to come help celebrate our successes, which is our, really our big volunteer appreciation event every year for all the volunteers that come out and put all their hard work. There will be drinks, food, a very brief presentation, and just an ability to highlight our downtown businesses, volunteers, property owners, and everyone who puts a lot into this downtown. One thing that we were able to do, we were able to attend the Illinois Main Street Conference, where we did receive quite a few accolades again this year, and had the ability to speak. Last year, if you can pull this up for us here, I apologize. Help me out here, Joy. Am I right? I can't see anything. Yeah. Yep. There we go. So, last year at the conference, we were, we were able to win, out of forty-five different Main Street communities, there are four awards given out every year, one for each committee, design, promotion, organization, and economic restructuring. Last year, we won three out of the four, for design for the downtown flower planners. Promotion was for our community garden, and economic restructuring for the broker tour, which last year allowed us to bring brokers, various commercial real estate brokers downtown, and accounted for filling over 4,000 square feet of open space. Obviously, we won for the community garden for the amount of volunteers and hours that go through, and all the produce from there gets donated to the food pantry. This year, we went back down and were once again able to take three out of the four awards from the, from the conference. This year for organization was for our Celebrate Success Event, which is our, again, our volunteer appreciation. This year for economic restructuring, the Artisan Collective won, and then also for the River Street Streetscape for an innovative design for downtown. Along with all these accolades, we do also have the ability that, and we're very lucky that Christina Rogers, who is the Illinois Main Street Coordinator from Springfield, has been able to come up here this evening to talk to, talk to us and give a little presentation for the city here. I will pass the mic over to her.
Not necessarily a presentation, but I just really want to thank, or thank all of you for all of your support for the Main Street program over the years. Joy is really one of our stars, as far as our directors. We do have forty-two communities, and she's somebody who everyone really looks up to, and, and also the board, who we have our president on the council, Jamie, for just her innovative ideas and people, I know that some of our new directors really, she's really been a mentor to our newer and younger communities. Also, another thing I want to say is that Joy's participation in Main Street events throughout the year, and also her reporting of reinvestment statistics, which not all of the communities are, are doing, and so, and that's, which is very unfortunate, but she, it really does show her success in the fact that, you know, your supportive, her board is supportive, in allowing her to participate at the level that she is, and then also coming up with these fantastic ideas that are, such as the broker tour that are being copied throughout the state. So she's really setting the mark very high in what we hope our Main Street, all forty-two, our other forty-one, I'm sorry, Main Street communities could do in their, in their Main Street towns. So I thank you so much, and congratulations to Joy and our board of, and your Board of Directors for all of your hard work this past year, and I'm sure that you'll take home even more awards next year. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, and thank you for coming up and chatting with us this evening. Appreciate all the good efforts Main Street is doing statewide. Okay, are we done? Joy, do you have something more you want to add?
Sorry, thank you, thanks very much. I just wanted to say one other thing. We're also going to be receiving for Batavia as a community, a proclamation from the governor. So I'll have also, not only that proclamation for you guys, kind of based on the progress that we've had in the past few years, and of course, the awards that we're able to show a lot of the Illinois Main Street communities, all the hard work that we've been putting into our community. And then also, in addition, I've had another award made also for the city of Batavia, because really, again, without the support and partnerships that we have as Main Street, we can't go out and do the work that we do in the community. So it's really something for all of us to celebrate and share. So I just wanted to add that. That's all. Thank you.
You're done? Thank you. Okay, moving to eight, which is a presentation on bicycle-friendly community designation. John Gamble?
Well, first, I'm going to turn over to Ed Barsati, the Executive Director of the Illinois League of American Bicycleists. Good evening, everyone. As John mentioned, my name is Ed Barsati, and I'm with LIB, a statewide organization, also Bulldog Class of eighty-three. But I'm here tonight representing the League of American Bicycleists, which is a national organization. And LIB has a program called the Bicycle Friendly Community Designation Award. It's a very, it's a very difficult award to achieve, and in fact, there are only eight communities now in Illinois that have won that award. What it is, is a holistic approach of a community trying to make bicycling a realistic option for recreation and transportation in that community. It involves an infrastructure of a bikeway network, education of motorists and cyclists, working with enforcement, encouragement programs, and so on. There are different levels. There's bronze level, silver, gold, and even further up the chain. It's a difficult award to win. In fact, only forty percent of those who apply actually win. I'm proud to say tonight that Batavia is now the seventh bicycle-friendly community in Illinois, behind places including Chicago, Schaumburg, Naperville, Urbana, Champaign, and Elmhurst. So we're in very select company. It's, it's a great honor, and it definitely says that Batavia has a commitment and a partnership between its, its bicycle commission, which John will speak, speak for, also the, the staff, who has been very involved with making this happen, and the leadership from elected officials. Together, that partnership is what's required to make this award possible. So this will truly be a feather in Batavia's cap, something that you can promote as you try to attract businesses and families to your community. And again, I want to congratulate Batavia for winning this award. John?
Yes, well, I wasn't, thanks, Ed. It's funny, because I've been trying to figure out what, what we should say, and really, this started as a seed a long, it seemed like a long time ago, but it wasn't that long ago, when I was in front of City Council saying, hey, we need to have a bike commission. And so really, what I wanted to say was, thank you to everybody that's been involved with this process. It's not, it's just been fabulous. It's been organic, as Ed said, but we've all worked together to achieve this. And I'm going to take just a moment, and I think I'll call up the commissioners that are involved also. Our current bike commission, well, I'd like to thank, first off, City Council, for all of your support, and I, but I'll call up the commissioners that are here tonight. I would like, Amy Moore was a huge part of this, getting this, Joanne Spitz, Matt Knowles, John Burnham, PJ Scott, Paul Carpenter, Rick James. Then other people that have been involved as either commissioners or past, just advocates, Liz Costantino, Pete Cleary, Rich Sternberg, Joanne Walker, Mike and Don Tutte, Austin Dempsey, Gary Granberg, Tim Ozan, Dave Peterson, Jeff Smith, Heidi Files, Jane Maxwell, and Shannon McCall. Again, I cannot emphasize the city cooperation enough. Bill McGrath was instrumental in helping at the beginning. Noel Basquin has been involved with us from the beginning, Jason Bajor. Emil Jensen is also sitting on the commission with us. The police department has been wonderful to work with, the city administration, all the departments, Park District, School District, Scott Haynes in the sign shop, I can't say, we wouldn't have the bike routes up there if we didn't. So anyway, I don't mean to go on, but I just appreciate everything that you've done in, in supporting us to continue. Our future is bright. We're viewing this as the starting point. We've got still a lot of good plans in the future, so. We do have a couple things to present.
We have both a certificate and a couple of road signs that, that the national organization is providing, so it might be a great opportunity for a photo op. I don't know how we want to handle that. Do you need to get the mayor? So on behalf of League of American Bicycleists, congratulations to the city of Batavia.
Thank you. Let me just say, on behalf of the City Council and the community, we want to thank the Batavia Bicycle Commission, specifically for your leadership and trying to helping us find our way under the map and the route that we needed to take to get there. And it's exciting to see the continued growing interest that this has in the community, and I, I really am hopeful and encouraged that this is going to mean some significant education and participation on folks, and a better understanding of bicycle etiquette and rules, and certainly a better, greater understanding by the community in general about the value of the bicycle and how it's really kind of coming into a kind of revived lifefulness in our community, because we seem to have more and more people on a daily basis wanting to ride a bike all kinds of the day, all times of the year, and I think we're onto something here that we're kind of hopefully kind of set the pace for everybody else in the region that kind of power, so thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your support. All right, next item is item nine, which is the appointment, or the reappointment to the Batavia Historical Preservation Commission of current members Kathy Searle and Phil Bus, and I'd ask for a motion of confirmation of that.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the appointments. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilien?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Moving to item number ten, which is ordinance thirteen dash forty-one, a variance for the total sign area for the tower sign at three through 147 South Randall Road. Alderman Brown, do you have this?
I do, Your Honor, thank you. This was reviewed at the Zoning Board of Appeals and also at the community, community development portion of the J-Cow. It did come out of the Zoning Board of Appeals with a negative recommendation. That was because they could not rule in favor of the findings of facts. The way the findings of facts are written, it just, it just did not meet the requirements for that variance. I respect very highly what they did. I always happened to be at that meeting that night, and I respect very highly how they went through that process. But at the same time, they did say at the end of going through that process, that they encouraged the City Council to pass this variance. They think it's a very worthwhile effort on the part of the petitioner, and there's really no hindrance on what they're doing, and, and they encouraged us to pass it. So we did discuss this at, at the CDC portion of the J-Cow. It did pass with a positive recommendation. Just as a matter of fact here, the sign itself is replacing the existing sign by the windmill out there in front of the plaza. The sign that's there now is an older sign. It's not illuminated. This sign is, what needs a variance is the actual portion of the sign that identifies the tenants that are in that plaza. The size of the sign itself, the total structure, is within code. So it's just the internal part of the sign that, that requires the variance. So they'd be replacing the existing sign with this sign. They'd be redoing the landscaping around there, and as I said, it did come out of CDC with a positive recommendation. So I would move for approval of ordinance thirteen dash forty-one.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of ordinance thirteen dash forty-one for the new sign at the tower, sign at three through 147 South Randall Road. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilien?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Clark?
No.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
So that vote was ten yes, three no, one absent.
This would change back towards the diagonal parking, bringing thirty-nine parking spaces into play instead of the twenty-nine that were in the original approved plan, and then also some changes to the bike path sidewalk on the Park District frontage along the River Walk. That's where we're at with that. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you want to make mention of what the additional cost is going to be?
Sure. The additional cost, we have ninety-five hundred dollars already spent for the redesign and the difference of forty-six thousand five hundred dollars for the new design. Change it back to gain the additional ten parking spaces back for downtown.
You want to chirp in on this one? Alderman Brown?
I have to say, you know I do, I'm against this. The original plan was approved over a year ago for the redevelopment of, redesign and redevelopment of Houston Street. A lot of community input went into that design, a lot of council time, a lot of businesses and residents were a part of that. We since have decided to take a look at that design, and staff has made a recommendation through the conversation to come back with option one and option two. I'm concerned that not only are we spending forty-six thousand plus ninety-five hundred on this redesign, that I am also concerned that anytime you change something, it's going to cost more than what you planned on it costing. So, I don't think we've seen the bottom, or the top, rather, of this roughly fifty-six thousand dollars. I think we're going to end up spending a whole lot more than that. We've got a long way to go to get this design out to bid. So, I think there's going to be a lot of surprises that come along. I hope I'm wrong. I will be voting no in favor of this. I know I'm probably one of the few that will be, but those are my reasons why. Thank you.
Anybody else?
And I'm in favor of this. I think the number one comment that we received from all the local businessmen and residents that spoke up was that they weren't happy about the loss of parking. And to me, forty-five thousand dollars spent to regain ten parking stalls is a bargain, and well worth the money expended.
Anybody else? All right. Court call the roll then on ordinance thirteen dash forty-one.
Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry.
I have to make a motion on this. I would make a motion that we direct staff to proceed with the design option number one and revise engineering and streetscape plans to incorporate this design.
I'll second.
Moved by Alderman Wolfe, second by Alderman Vassillion, for the approval of the ordinance, or the, not the ordinance, the approval of the Houston Street redesign option one and authorizing redesign engineering. Any further discussion? Court call the roll.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Searone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Clark?
No.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
So, that vote was ten yes, three no, one absent. Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item number twelve, which is resolution thirteen dash one twenty-nine dash R, approve micro loan for Sea Storm Electronics. Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a micro loan application for Sea Storm Electronics. Just a little background, in September two thousand and ten, the city established a micro loan program. It is a sub-program of a revolving loan fund program available to the city and funded by the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. This is, so the state is funding this micro loan. Sea Storm Electronics came to us for a loan for their business that they've been in operation since two thousand and eleven. They're an electronic solution provider that develops and manufactures electronic control modules for recreation, emergency, and transit bus vehicles. This year, they've had a extremely high amount of orders coming in, and they can't fill the orders due to cash flow problems. So, they came to the city for a micro loan, and we approved it out of committee thirteen to zero. The terms would be a thirty-six month repayment term at a percentage, annual percentage rate of three point two five percent. It also includes a personal guarantee for the loan. That said, I move that we pass resolution thirteen dash one twenty-nine dash R, micro loan for Sea Storm Electronics.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Chansett, for the approval of resolution thirteen dash one twenty-nine dash R, the approval of the micro loan for Sea Storm Electronics. Any discussion? Court call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Searone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving to thirteen, the Administrator's Report. Mr. McGrath?
Thanks, Mayor. Brief report. I too am very excited about the Bicycle Friendly Award. I think it's going to really tie in with some economic development plans and some other parts of our strategic plan, so it's a great thing. On the, you know, our largest project at the moment is the Walgreens Project. We, the staff met today. We have a formalized response. We're setting up a meeting with the developers for later this week. Then we'll not only send you word of the status of that negotiation, but we also want to start talking, or tomorrow night, I'd like to talk with you a little bit about some possible scheduling regarding that project, so we, so we can get an idea of what evenings we might have this on the agenda, make sure there's adequate notice to the community if some people are interested in being there, and also so we can set up some schedules so we can get our other work done. So, we'll talk about it a little bit tomorrow night. The other, the largest item is the budget. It's moving forward. We'll be coming in with a balanced budget. It hopefully will be distributed by the end of this week to you. It does include a suggestion of an increase in the leaf and brush fee, which we will discuss with you, but we've had some disturbing estimates of increases to come over the next few years, and we're going to have to examine the whole program very carefully with you. We'll also have a balanced TIF budget. It's at the cost of some projects which we'll be identifying. And tomorrow, we will be able to update you on the, on the TIF account itself and looking forward the next several years. Lastly, we still have three strategic plan presentations left, economic development, the downtown and environmental elements. And I think Jason Bajor was out ill today, unfortunately, so tomorrow night at the J-Cow, I'll be able to set up some nights for you, so you'll know when to expect those. And that's, that's all I have.
Any questions, the Administrator?
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports, the Community Development, Alderman Brown?
The only thing I have tonight, Your Honor, is a couple of meetings to announce. Tomorrow night at the J-Cow, which starts at seven thirty, we have one item on the agenda, which is the strategic plan element of housing. Plan Commission is meeting October twenty-third, Wednesday at seven thirty, and then Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet October twenty-eighth at five thirty. So, I have.
Okay. Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
Just a reminder that Thursday night, there is the NIPA Annual Board Meeting out in Rochelle. I'm not sure if it's too late to RSVP for that. I don't know if you've gotten it is or isn't, Gary. So, if you're interested in going, the board meeting starts at five, then there's a dinner and a speaker after dinner about Prairie State. So, if you're interested in going, let Gary Holm know. Also, on October twenty-ninth, at the Joint Committee of the Whole Meeting, there's some public utility items regarding the Cherry Park substation, what type of wall we want to put up, and sanitary sewer pipelining discussion. And that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
City Services, Alderman Wolfe?
Thank you.
I have nothing on the next two J-Cow meetings. No report.
Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. October twenty-second, we will be discussing tank car standards and also the emergency management mutual aid agreements between King County, Geneva, and St. Charles. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Moving then to item number fifteen, other business. Do you have any other business?
I do.
Alderman Vassillion?
I was able to attend the, several of the workshops at the Illinois Municipal League Conference this past week, and sat in on a couple sessions called Council Wars. And it was paneled by a series of attorneys, and they were telling horror stories from around the state about how councils operate. And they had one story that they told about this last election. And the outgoing council did not like the incoming council members at all. And the, on the night of the swearing in, the new council had ordered cake for their reception, and they had invited the Boy Scouts to be a part of the Pledge of Allegiance. And as the meeting started, the outgoing, or the village president stopped them in the midst of the procedure and said, I'm sorry, the Boy Scouts aren't on the agenda, and wouldn't let them conduct their ceremony. So, the Boy Scouts marched out in tears. And pretty soon, the village president and clerk realized what an error they had made, and ran out to try and negotiate and get the Boy Scouts back in. And the Boy Scouts refused to come back. And then the, they refused to swear in the new members, and they had to swear themselves in. And then, lastly, they didn't want to recognize that the cake was not on the agenda. And so, it was a mess, but I went away from that with a great appreciation for how well our council works together. I know a lot of people thought our last election was contentious, but this, it was nothing. And I went away really with a great deal of respect and appreciation for how well everyone works together in our local government. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
I do.
Alderman Wolfe?
Thank you. I'm in my BATV hat right now. First off, last regular season home game, Friday night, seven o'clock on my BATV, if you can't get out to the stadium. And then Saturday, what's become a quick tradition the past few years, is the playoff pairings gathering out at the high school in the main gym. If you can make it out there, if you got little kids that want to see the players, it is a really interesting night, as they do the playoff pairings on the IHSA. We watch that TV show out there with the community and everybody that's there, and then get interviews with the players and coaches. And it's also available on my BATV, if you want to see that. Start that, again, start Saturday night at seven PM. If you're out there, if you want to come out there, it goes from seven to about nine. And then, as soon as they find out who's they play, every coach and every player disappears to watch film, and they're there all night. So, it's a really interesting night.
Very good. Anything else?
They are conference champs.
The most important part.
You got it. Three years in a row.
All right. Moving to sixteen, very quickly. Number one, I would like to publicly congratulate the Batavia Middle School Track and Field Team, who this past weekend got second place in the...
Both teams.
Both teams, both the boys and the girls, got second place in their statewide competition. And that's quite an honor for us and for them, and we certainly want to acknowledge that. I was pleased we could get, the fire department went out and met the bus coming into town and escorted them back into the school. And so, I was very pleased that we were able to participate in that. It was kind of all on a real short notice. Somebody called my house and left me a message, but unfortunately, I didn't get the message about it till later in the evening, so I didn't realize what was going on. But there, again, obviously, in the ranks of Batavia schools, a lot of very talented athletics, athletic people that Batavia, I think, should be prepared for a number of years in the future of continued athletic success. So, BATV is going to have a lot to talk about.
That's a great program out there. I have a daughter who's a senior at the high school that started there in seventh grade, and so she's finishing up after six years of being in the cross-country program. So, it all begins there.
And the other thing I wanted to share with you is, as you may remember, at the last J-Cow meeting, I told you that there was going to be a possibility that I would be on TV on Thursday night. And as it ended up, I think I was, I have a tape of this. I think I was on all four of the two, five, seven, and nine channels in the ten o'clock news. And this was relative to the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings Policy Committee, of which I am a member, representing the Council of Mayors for the region, had the final say on whether or not the region would allow for the adding to the regional transportation plan. They proposed Iliana Expressway, which will run, proposed to run from I sixty-five in Indiana, south of Crown Point, in a western position over to I fifty-five in Illinois. And it's basically going to run in Will County, just north of the Kankakee County border. The State Transportation Secretary is chairman of our group, and this past year, I've had the opportunity to be the vice chairman of that group. And so, as it, things worked out, as I think I told you, there was a possibility, and it was, I got to the opportunity to make the motion for the group to vote on. At the end of, we had three hours of meeting and thirty-seven speakers and testimony, and we had them from both sides of the issue with a lot of hard-pressed ideas and people with varying transpositions. And there had been a lot said in the week prior to that by various voices in the state and region. It had gotten a lot, under a lot of people's skin, and so there was a lot of venting of frustration and angst at the meeting. But at the end of the day, when they had the roll call, there are nineteen members on the policy committee, and the motion to add the Iliana was approved by a vote of eleven yes and eight no. And the motion that I made was one that was obviously prepared ahead of time, that basically said that we were approving the Iliana Expressway in a physically constrained position. In other words, if there is not somebody from a private sector stepping forth with the money to build it, with the idea that they would finance it and fund it, and would be paid back over a period of years with tolls that would be generated on it, this thing isn't going to go any further than that. So, the State Transportation Department has assured me that they do have people they're talking to from the investment world that are interested in potentially funding this, and we'll see if it actually happens. But it was added to the plan. I voted for it on behalf of the Council of Mayors, specifically from the perspective that I represent on that body a seven-county area. And when we have these kind of critical decisions, what I try to do is talk to the, to the counties and the bodies, that the councils of government, that are directly impacted by whatever it is we're talking about. And in this case, it was the South Suburban Mayors and the Will County Government League. And I can tell you that in kind of polling the groups down there, there was only one city out of a whole bunch that was against it, and everybody else was very strongly in favor. But so, based on that sentiment, I supported it and went forth. Interestingly, it was of the seven county, and all the county board chairmen were at the meeting, of the seven counties that were there to vote on it, the only two that voted against it were Crook County and McHenry County, and Lake County, DuPage County, Kane County, Kendall County, and Will County all voted in favor of it. So, it was a kind of a very intensified and highly publicized discussion. And I will tell you that after you had your, you've been shown on all four or five of the TV ten o'clock news programs in Chicagoland, I have a new respect for how many people in this town watch the ten o'clock news. Because all weekend, every place I went, I'm hearing from somebody, I saw you on TV, and what was that all about? And I don't know how many times I've explained this whole thing, but there, I have a real strong respect for how many people watch the Chicago TV news at ten o'clock. It really gets its fair share of viewership. So, word to the wise and a lesson for everybody, if you're going to end up on the ten o'clock news, be prepared for people to talk to you about it, because there's widespread viewership of that going on. So, with that out of the way, I guess Alderman Brown, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
We adjourn the October twenty-first City Council meeting.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman, which one of you guys, Holman? I couldn't tell whose voice I heard. Court, take a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.